Good morning, we will call the June 2nd, 2020 City Council Meeting to order. Good morning, everyone, and welcome you all here. I'm gonna call on Councilman Johnny Dodd to lead us in our invocation and pledge. Would please stand.
I'd like to call up Pastor Ronald Ben, please. Pastor from Mount Mariah Baptist Church.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Eternally God our Father, we come first of all saying thank you. Secondly, we need you, we cannot make it without you. It's in you that we live, and you that we move, and you that we have our forever. You have been better to us than we've been to ourselves. Lord, we thank you for yesterday, we thank you for today. For you walk with us so that we can enter into our tomorrow, and tomorrow you get a chance to see. Lord, we standing right here now calling on your name, for we know there's power in your name. We've all been wrong, we've all been sort of discontent with some things and procrastinating, but Lord, we know right now that you got us in place where we all can come together. But you know, you told us that if we stay together, dear Lord, we got more power than this day. And we look for us to hear the coming out here, all out here come from you. We love you, we adore you, but right now, Lord, we need leadership. We need a blessing on leadership, Lord, so that we can get this confused country back together. We know that there's nothing like the big city of Jackson, so Lord, keep us, keep us on your mind and say in our heart, Lord, that we can do what's best for our country as well as our city of Jackson right now. Bless the mayor, bless the governor, bless the president of the United States, bless Congress and the Senate. And then, Lord, bless all of those cities that are going through what they're going through right now, rioting, looking, and trying to do what they think is right. But Lord, we know that you are the only one that can control. So ask right now that you continue to keep us in your care, keep us in your hand. And we thank you again, Lord, for a day that we have never seen before and a day that we'll never see again. We thank you so much right now. It's in Jesus' precious name we say our prayers. Let it in our hearts, say amen.
Amen.
Switched up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce, this evening at 5:30, we'll be kneeling for nine minutes for George Floyd. So if anybody would like to come out, bring your mask. We'll be right out here in front of City Hall. We're asking you all to come out and support, uh, today at 5:30, kneeling for nine minutes for George Floyd. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dodd. Item three is roll call, and Sandy, you'll see that all council members are present. Item four is approval of the minutes. Council got a copy of that. There are no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Invitation for public comments. If anyone here wants to, wishes to speak on any item under first reading, and that item comes up, please raise your hand and be recognized. Item seven, first reading. Number one is consideration of a budget amendment to transfer an amount not to exceed 500,000 from the general fund to the debt service fund.
Good morning, thank you, Mayor. We're currently projecting a deficit fund balance in the debt service fund at June 30th, 2020. This proposed amendment is necessary and required to allow us to fund that deficit by making a transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund.
So move. Before we go to motion, Bobby, can you explain why we have the potential deficit in the debt service fund?
Sure, be happy to. There's several reasons. When we look at our projected revenues for this year compared to what we had budgeted for, we're looking at about a, I'm around these numbers a little bit, a $300,000 shortfall in revenues in the debt service fund. When we look at expenses this year compared to what was budgeted, we're projecting that our expenses are gonna exceed the budget by about $400,000, primarily due to two reasons. The smaller reason being that earlier this year, we still had some variable rate debt, and the actual interest rate on that variable rate debt exceeded the budgeted variable rate debt. The more significant reason on the expense side has to do with the bond issue back in the fall of 2019. You may recall that we did a large refunding, which did generate a very nice return, net present value on future cash savings. But you may also recall that we issued debt, new money debt of $6 million that was actually not included in the budget. And for this current fiscal year, the debt service requirements on that new debt exceeded the savings for this year on the refunding portion of the debt. And then finally, a couple of meetings ago, the council approved the debt service fund writing off an interfund receivable that should be back to the debt service fund from the sportsplex fund. That's estimated at an amount not to be, not to exceed $300,000. And that's a requirement from the comptroller's office that we take that action, and that was not budgeted for as well. So when you add all of that up, it produces what I'm estimating to be a deficit in the debt service fund balance. Right now, it's sitting at about $150,000. There's still, the numbers are still moving around some, so I certainly expect it to be less than what we're asking for in this amendment. So this is a not to exceed an amount.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Honig, are you comfortable with the not to exceed the $500,000 figure?
Yes.
All right, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand and be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Cisco.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brooks. Any further discussion?
One question, Mr. Honig, in terms of timeline, I know it's first reading, so this will come back to us the second time. Do we know which, you know, we've got some special call meetings.
It'll come back next week.
Okay. And do we feel like we'll have, I know it's a short turnaround time and things are moving, but do we feel like we'll be closer to that number by then, or is it still an unknown?
I'll be happy to give you an update next week. It's hard, it's hard to estimate exactly, you know, how much, how much we'll know a week from now. We don't know today, but be happy.
Sure. When would we know those final numbers?
Well, when we issue June financial statement, we'll, so that'll be in July. But we, we're doing our best to estimate the numbers, and we're being conservative, and I feel confident we won't exceed this number.
Could you provide us with a kind of a final statement on all these items that we've had, passed do not exceed numbers on as we go into next fiscal year?
Sure, sure, I'll be happy to do that. You'll, you'll get an update on those numbers that you're referring to as we work through the budget the next, the next couple of weeks. But certainly, when, when all the final numbers are in, we'll be happy to report back on the outcome.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Not counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
All right, item two is a consideration of a budget amendment to approve dog park funded by grant from the Boyd Foundation.
Right, so the new dog park out by the ballpark is nearing completion. That, that activity was not included in the 2020 budget that we'll be wrapping up here shortly. So the purpose of this amendment is to recognize the revenues and expenses associated this year with the construction of the new dog park.
All right, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Motion by Councilman Dodd, and second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McKelvey. Any discussion?
When do, sorry. When do, when do we anticipate receiving the final draw? Or have we received that?
We've already received.
Okay. And to be clear, the budget will not exceed the original $100,000?
Correct.
Any additional questions, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Pass.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It doesn't have anything to do with the dog park, but the ammo control center. When do we see that being completed?
We'll, we'll discuss that at our budget hearing next week. It's, it's gonna be on pause.
And it be, it's on pause?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Item three is a consideration of the ordinance to close and abandon in their entirety Porter Alley, Arnold Alley, and Luller Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel.
Good morning.
You have in your packet the information concerning these closures. The planning commission did recommend this to you. These are alleys and former streets that do no, they do not exist anymore. They are south of the JCM building, between JCM and Allen. So this is just a matter of cleanup as we, you know, as we are under construction on the new school.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powell had me both before a little bit. Never in my 22 years on this council did I know these streets exist in the district. So I looked and looked, and I couldn't find them. And he tells me they know, they're not around anywhere.
Covered up by grass. All right, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Taylor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wallace. Any questions or further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Item four is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance to the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Article 5, Specific District Regulations, Section 13, SC-1, Planned Unit Commercial Development, District C.
All right, Mayor and Counsel, you have the text amendment for the SC-1 zone. This does allow for now, if approved, climate controlled facilities in SC-1. This does not follow traditional mini-stores. This is not your external doors, mini-storage that you traditionally think of. This is internal, climate controlled inside of buildings. So basically, the planning commission felt, the staff felt that as long as it's internal, you're never gonna know the difference between that and any other building in SC-1. So, so we are recommending this to you. The planning commission did approve it.
This is an item on first reading, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, who was the second? Councilman Taylor. Any questions or further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. All right, no second readings. New business. Item one in our new business is consideration of a contract with the Crown Law Firm for legal services.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, this is a contract that we're asking for approval from the council on. We're looking to enter into an agreement with Mr. Crown. He's an attorney. He's gonna do an audit of our Jackson General's invoices. Mr. Crown comes to us, serving for four years, as senior advisor to Mayor Strickland's first term. He understands municipal law, and I've spent a couple of weeks looking at it, and we believe it's time to have someone else look at it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Our, our internal legal department can't handle this?
We, we feel it's best that our, we use someone external to do this?
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Crown here?
He's not here, no sir.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace, second by Dodd. Any further questions or discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion pass.
All right, item two in our new business is the acceptance of resignation and retirement of city recorder Al Lefon. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So moved.
Yeah, yeah, gotta move out Higgins. Second by Cisco. All right, any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Item three in our new business is the appointment of a city recorder. I would like to recommend Bobby Arnold as the appointment for the city recorder.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Cisco, second by Dodd. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
All right, item four in our new business, consideration of a contract, CMA 2172, between the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation and the city of Jackson. This is a contract for the recent storm damage for reimbursement for that cleanup. Oh, there's Percy.
All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, the council and the mayor.
Good morning.
This is a state contract doing with maintenance and mowing. State contract one is a maintenance contract and a mowing contract. It's something we do every year. State contract one is a, has to do with the mown of one and five, which is housing south, the medium and outside, and set in the west, set in the east, off of East Chester. And the maintenance part is mostly sweeping and potholes. And in the winter time, it'll be softing, de-icing, plowing, and whatever we have to do. It's contract. Like I say, basically, we do this every year. We renew it every year around this time.
For the reimbursement fee from the state and what we do.
Yes, sir. State, state contract two is just basically mowing. It's 45. We pick that up, we do six cycles of mowing, 12 cycles of litter pickup.
So let's, so 21, we'll do 2172 first, and then talk about 2173.
Okay, all right.
All right, is there any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McKelvey, second Cisco.
No, Buchanan.
Buchanan, second by Buchanan. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
All right, now to item 2173.
State contract two is basically just mowing, six cycles of mowing on the back pass. We'll be picking up state when they finish the interstate. It was included, but we dropped it off, I think, three years ago when they finished all the work they do, that we'll pick that back up, mowing and 12 cycles of litter on there too. It's basically from airways all the way after, pay us more.
Thank you, Percy.
All right.
Have a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion by Buchanan, second by Cisco. Any questions, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Percy.
Thank you.
Item six is a consideration of a contract with Alexander Thompson Arnold for the 2020 audit.
Thank you, yeah. This would be the annual contract with our accounting firm, in this case ATA, to perform the audit for the fiscal year that'll begin in June 30th.
So moved.
Motion by Buchanan, says her second.
Second.
Second by Dodd, any questions?
Is the intent next year to have this bid out?
Yes.
Okay. No further question.
Any other questions or discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Item seven is a consideration of a contract with Traffmark Industries for on-call pavement marking maintenance.
Yes, we received one bid on this project, and we're asking that you award this based upon unit prices. It will be a one-year contract with four, one-year options to renew.
So moved.
Move by Buchanan, their second.
Second.
Second by Wallace. Any questions or discussion?
And Scott, you mentioned the other day kind of the reason for the one bid, that they kind of, they're one of the few people, or could you kind of give us that response again?
Yes, we, we wanted to make sure that the contractor that did this work was T-DOT pre-qualified, mainly because our streets throughout Jackson are striped, just like the state highways are, and that's a little bit of specialized work. Most of the local contractors that are down, like Delta Contract and Ford Construction, they're all listed, but they use this particular company as a sub to them anyway. We did reach out to vendors, contractors in Memphis and Nashville within an hour or so driving distance, and made sure that they were at least advised. But I think they have some, maybe some boundaries that they try to stay within competition-wise. And I made the statement that this is kind, this is an on-call contract. If we were gonna do a, you know, a million-dollar striping job at the city, some of those people may decide to come in and, and bid for that size of project. But for $20,000 of come in and do some local striping for us, they're out of Huntington, they do have a crew that comes out of Memphis sometimes. They're just really set up to be the main striping company in this town. If we, if we were gonna do some parking lot strides, you know, even though I have this in this bid, it may be more feasible to release a bid out so that some parking lot type companies that do that on a more regular basis would bid on that kind of job. But for striping highways, this is the company that does it.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item eight is consideration of a resolution to approve five-year consolidated plan 2020-2024 and annual action plan 2020-2021.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a recipient of, an entitlement city and a recipient of HUD funding, we are required, we are responsible actually, for submitting to HUD a five-year consolidated plan. So right now, we are up for our next consolidated plan, which begins July 1, 2020, and runs through June 30, 2025. The consolidated plan is basically a planning document designed to help us assess the housing and community development needs within the city of Jackson, and it also includes a strategic plan for addressing those needs. The time, excuse me, the goals in the consolidated plan, I think you all do have a summary? Did you get a summary of the, okay. The goals of the consolidated plan are to improve quantity and quality of affordable housing, provide a suitable living environment, expand economic opportunities, and expand the capacity of homeless providers. Now, we wanted to keep these goals broad because for agencies in Jackson that apply for HUD funding, they have to come to us and certify that their project is consistent with the comp plan. So we wanted to keep those broad, and for each goal listed, we did identify some activities that we want to undertake over the next five years to try to address those goals. Now, for the consolidated plan, it's carried out through our annual action plans, which provide a summary of the activities and the resources that we'll use each year to address these priority needs identified in the consolidated plan. And you all do have a summary of those proposed activities as well as the budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
I have a question, if I may. Are, are CDBG funds and home funds, are they flat, or are they, have they decreased over the year?
This coming up year, we did receive an increase. We received about a $55,000 increase in CDBG funds, and in home funds, we received about a $40,000 increase.
Okay. And, and does the department receive funding from the federal government relative to COVID-19?
We have, well, we did have, get an allocation. We have not received the funding yet. I'm waiting on HUD right now to get us the agreement so that we can start that process. We received $342,526.
Can you give us an idea of what we plan to do with those funds?
Yes, the priority, after a few meetings and everything, the priority was to look at helping people with utility assistance, rent assistance, and mortgage assistance. And I'm hoping that we get the agreements from HUD soon, because I think right now is when everything is about to hit.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. The money that, that you're speaking of, that was through the CARES Act?
Yes, that's supplemental CDBG funding.
And so we're still, we're still waiting on that distribution from the federal government?
Correct.
When we get that, can we get, moving forward, can we get quarterly reports on how that money is distributed? I think we talked about that in our last meeting.
We'll, we'll be resourcing those funds through United Way, but we will get, we can do quarterly reports.
Okay, thank you.
I hear the questions. Do I have a motion?
Very quickly, Mayor, Latony, there's been conversations relative to maybe having internet in some of our public housing projects. Can you give us an update on that?
That would be Mark.
And, and thank you for being here, Mark. I know you and I have had some personal discussions about this, but I just wanted to put it on the record.
All right, good morning, Mayor, Counsel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we are in collaboration with the city, with the school department here, Jackson County School System, and we have a meeting hopefully set up this week. I've been talking with T-Mobile and along with AT&amp;T, trying to see the best way to do it. We run into a few complications with buildings being structured as they are with the cylinder block.
Right.
Trying to see the most effective way that we can do that. And I have a meeting set up again with T-Mobile on Thursday.
And have you identified?
Completing the surveys today of who all don't. Because we found that one of, where Lincoln Court, we had 39% of the families already had internet, so we're trying to find out who to have it through and the number of people that had it, and so we're trying to work out that.
Sure.
Once we get all the data of the companies that they're interacting with, and then we're gonna go from there to make sure there's mostly, Lincoln Court was the one that had the most, at 39%.
Is the plan to supplement those people that already had it, or just to?
Well, what we, what we're gonna do is make sure that every unit has access to, in collaboration with the school system here. We only receive so many dollars that we can put toward it, and if we collaborate with, I know that the school system is getting some CARES money as well.
Correct.
To do things like this the other counties have.
And have you identified those properties that you're looking at putting in?
Yes, we're looking mainly at Washington Douglas, Allerton Heights, Lincoln Court. And if it allows, we'll extend to the others, but those are our largest family units.
Thank you so much, Mark.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dodd, second by Taylor. Any further discussion or questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is consideration of board appointments for the Code Advisory Appeals Board, reappointment of Todd Crasner, reappointment of Tom Allen, and the appointment of Josh Hades.
So moved.
We have a motion by Cisco, second by Buchanan. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
All right, item 10 is consideration of reappointment of Estelle Davis to the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dodd, second by Brooks. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
Item 11 is consideration of invoices over $10,000. Motion by Dodd?
Second.
Second by McKelvey.
How many invoices, there was one section that, I guess with waste management, seemed like a larger number, but is that timing with the dates? From April and May? I think it's about over, it's like 1.1 million.
Yeah, probably, it was timing, yeah. We have, it was in the, so we did a
We had, it was in the, so we did a transition, so you had the, the collection was a little off, so we had the timing on that with our roll-off dumpsters, the commercial dumpsters, everything was, the timing was a little off because of our transition.
That's just the normal stuff we're typically paying out?
Yeah, it just kind of lost a little bit of its tone.
Any additional questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass.
All right. That concludes the conference, the meeting is adjourned.